Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Did I knock off my plate?
Okay. Thank you for attending. This is the regular resumed meeting of the Board of Education for October 13, 2022. May I have a roll call, please? Hussein Barry?
Here.
Patty Dambrojo?
Here.
Adam Moszak?
Here.
Eric Petlicoff here. Jim Thorpe?
Here.
Irene Watts. She is absent. And President McDonald?
Here.
The Pledge of Allegiance. We are happy to announce that we have a young community member, Isabella, who's going to come up and read the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Can we make sure that Isabella gets a certificate sent to her? Thank you. Very well done, Isabella. I would like to make a motion, President McDonald, that under citizen participation, we amend it to A Agenda Items for Action to also include in non-agenda items.
I support that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion moved by Trustee Petlicoff and supported by Trustee Barry. May I have a roll call, please? Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moszak?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff, yes. Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Irene Watts. President McDonald?
Yes. I want to start with an opening statement. Dearborn is a wonderful city. It is a melting pot where people from all over the world live, work, and play together. We appreciate and respect each other's cultures and differences. We share customs, holidays, meals, and friendship. Dearborn is a warm and welcoming place. We must continue to be that wonderful city we are all so proud to call home. Unfortunately, what occurred on Monday night's board meeting was nothing to be proud of. Please remember, our students and our children are watching. Everyone who turned in a blue card will have the opportunity to speak. Let's be respectful, civil, and calm. Please do not speak unless you have the floor. Our opinions and views are not necessarily shared by all. We value our individual freedoms and must respect and value the rights of others. As a public school district, we must serve all students and make them feel welcome and safe. We are deeply concerned to know that because of the hostility and anger that has recently erupted, some of our community do not feel safe, particularly our district media specialist and our LGBTQ students. Every child deserves to feel welcome, safe, and supported in their school. The purpose of these meetings is to conduct the business of the board. Because we appreciate and value the input from our community, we set aside time at each meeting to hear your thoughts and concerns. Everyone who filled out a blue card will have the opportunity to speak. This is not a time meant for dialogue, but just an opportunity to hear from our constituents. That is why we generally do not respond to each comment made at this time. I am asking that all of us here tonight be respectful of every speaker. That means to listen and not to talk when you do not have the floor. I will respect everyone here by doing my best as board president to treat everyone with the same level of fairness. Now, I believe Dr. Maleko wanted to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, thank you, President McDonald. I'll keep my comments brief. Just wanted to mention today, this afternoon, my favorite meeting of the year is my Student Advisory Council. This is the eighth year. I believe in student voice. We had a very good meeting. It's students from all over the district, the high schools, and they had a message that they wanted me to relay to everyone here tonight. And that is that they agree with expressing opinions, but it should be civility, a civil discourse, and done in a peaceful and calm manner. They say the students are watching, and the adults, they're saying, please be role models for the students that are watching because we are a public preschool, the 12 institutions. So I think that's very important. And I've learned so much from the students over the years, including, yes, how to implement Instagram and one-minute messages. But the students really, they really are saying that they want to see us act in an appropriate manner, not what happened last Monday. So I wanted to pass that on. I have another comment that I want to mention. Under the authority, and again, we don't want a repeat of Monday, we want people to be here and express their opinion, we want to hear it. But under our policy 0167.3, the presiding officer, and I'm just going to read a couple sections, may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Under number three, the presiding officer can request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person. Hopefully, it won't get to that point. We want to hear everyone. But again, if everyone can be peaceful in how they approach it and express their opinions, we would really appreciate that. I also want to recognize the fact that we did receive from a community member, and I think it was posted, a resolution. We had a meeting the other day, and I did promise that I would mention that we are going to look at that resolution. We have a process we follow with the board. It will be going through committee. And, you know, resolutions that come before the board go through a vetting process, and so we will be reviewing that at the next meeting. And so I want you to know, just to accept the fact that we have received it and that we are going through a normal process. Thank you very much, President McDonald. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Next item, please. Citizen participation.
Citizens wishing to address the board on Agenda Items for Action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary might speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. Madam President, I don't have any agenda items or blue cards for agenda items.
Hold on just a moment. I just wanted you to make that statement, and then I'm going to introduce Dr. -- or Mr. Mustenan. Because of the change in the venue and the number of citizens that are wishing to address the board tonight, I will now give the floor to Dr. -- or I'm sorry, to David Mustenan, our communications director, to explain the logistics of this evening's citizen participation. It's a little different than we're used to because of the difference in the venue and the number of people that would like to speak with us. Or, go ahead. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Trustee McDonald. I appreciate the promotion to doctor as well. So what we'll do here tonight, there's a screen located on the left-hand side of the auditorium. We will put up names, five names for each microphone. So this is microphone one. So if you see your name under microphone one, you know that this is where you're going to be speaking. And if you're on that list of five, you can get in line and line up. At the same time, on the other side is microphone two, and there'll be a list of five names, and you can come down and get in line at microphone two. What we're trying to do here is to expedite the process, that dead-air time between speakers, so that we can move right from one speaker to another. The board secretary will still call the name, and you will not speak until the board secretary calls your name, but at least if we can have everybody lined up and ready. The same screen is out in our overflow rooms. So if there are any participants in the overflow rooms who have a blue card, they can also see the names, and if they see their name kind of on the on-deck circle, they can come to the auditorium, they can wait their turn, they can come down to the microphone, speak, and then they will be asked to return to the overflow room at that time. Hopefully, we'll be able to expedite the process that way, and we're able to hear everybody who wishes to address the board. There is a three-minute timer down here that people can clearly see. As it gets near the end, it will turn to yellow, then it will turn to red. Once your time has expired, you will know that it is time to yield the mic to the next participant.
Thank you, Mr. Mustenan. Oh, may we have the first blue card, please?
Sure. All blue cards are non-agenda items. So the first one is Mr. Hassan Ahun. He would like to address the board on books, and he is from Dearborn.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Hassan Ahun. They call me a house cash in the community. I'm here to address the issue where the books that you guys have are inappropriate. At this time, I'm asking you guys to take the books down. Because I got a call from Virginia today, and they have the same situation, where he told me, you're going to come today, and they're going to have metal detectors, and you guys had metal detectors. You had security. Because what happened last time is one of you guys sat there and disrespected the community by telling them, shut up, when you guys first addressed, to calm down. And I said, you know, this is inappropriate. And I'm not going to sit here and tolerate anybody to disrespect my community, you know? We're out here for the kids. We didn't come here just to sit there and joke around, laugh, and this and that. This is not funny. This is, we have to address this issue. These things, the books, the graphics, this is not appropriate. Because what they did in West Virginia is, they said, yeah, we got a committee, we're going to look into it. They looked into it, and the next thing you know, they drafted people so they could forget about it, and then they came back and brought the books back on the shelves. Now, I don't know what you guys are trying to do. I don't know. Why didn't you take these books out and say, that's it, we're done with these books, but you guys want to sit here and just keep the books? You know, instead of you guys taking the six books out, we wouldn't even be here. What's the problem? What's the agenda? What are you getting out of it? What grants have you? I did a FOIA request. I think you guys got it. Fifteen point two-three-one, as amended. And I'm going to find out everything, and I'm going to find out what grants you guys, what's it called? Who has a nonprofit organization that's funding you this money, and you guys are sitting here and just, it's getting ridiculous. People got kids out here, okay? I'm not against the gay. I'm not against anything. I'm against the books, okay? Don't sit here and say that people are sitting here, coming to you guys, and just telling you, oh, we want these books out. You worried about the gay people? No problem. We're not worried about the gay people. We're worried about our children, okay? And second of all, I don't want to hear anybody, okay, sitting there saying, oh, you guys are offending the gay. These are kids. They can be eighteen. If they want to become gay, let them become gay. Who cares? It's not our problem. We don't want kids to have access to these books. It's nice and simple. I'm not going to address the situation no more. It is. It is what it is. And the only person that's behind this is Rashida Tlaib. Do not vote for Rashida Tlaib. It's nice and simple!
Next speaker is Mrs. Patricia Jones-Hartson. She would like to speak to the board about inclusion and current atmosphere. Patricia? Okay. Next. Next. Okay, we'll wait for her time. Thank you. Next speaker, yep. Next speaker is Mr. Jeff Selfit. He would like to speak to the board about illegal sexual explicit books.
Jeffrey Sala. I'd like to begin by saying thank you for the least acknowledging there is a flawed process and implementing a process. My biggest concern, why is the burden on the parents to find these books? What happens when the parents who don't read or speak English, why is it on them to try to opt out? They don't know what's going on. How do these books even end up in our library? That's the biggest thing. I mean, these books are really bad. I, when I'm looking at it, I cringe. They don't belong in the hands of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids. I believe there should be a process to review these books before they even get in our schools, not a review process once they're in our schools.
Next speaker is Mr. Ziad Abdul Malik. He would like to address the board on sexually explicit materials and dress code.
I now understand that you have a book challenge in process, book challenge process in place, or I shall say that you had one before, but it wasn't very public to the parents. It is also understandable that there might be some material in the schools which could be considered borderline inappropriate or controversial, depending on one's views. This book challenge has a potential to be a best-case scenario for these types of materials because everybody takes offense to different things in different ways. In regards to the specific material that we saw in the media center, a normal, psychologically sound and stable mind would come to a conclusion that that specific material is nothing but sexually explicit. And this type of material further promotes mental health issues, especially in reflection to self-harm, according to previous studies. I understand today that there are certain elements here in this city, as well as across the nation, making baseless claims which are vilifying parents and are making the issue about everything else except protecting young impressionable minds from filth that most adults shy away from or are uncomfortable reading. This type of material is a definition of things that fell through the cracks. And I understand, in a library of 500,000 books, it happens sometimes, even against best efforts. But that is where we step up and acknowledge our failures and we right our wrongs. These specific books should not be subjected to a book challenge, but outright removed. These are not borderline controversial materials, but outright infectious diseases on young developing minds which have the potential to have these minors seeking psychological help in the future. The school's job is to promote academia, and the parent's job is to raise their children. You are not a daycare, but a core education provider, which we pay our annual subscription fees through our tax dollars. Stick to math, science, history, literature, automotive, and computer technologies, which excites and challenges young minds, which in turn will provide the world with intellects that will lead in breakthroughs, cure disease, be upstanding contributing members to society. So let's focus on raising our rock-bottom test scores and do away with exposing minors to sexually explicit material. You can do better. We can all do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Anne Clark of Dearborn, would like to address the board on books.
I'd like to address the board on a personal note. Last Monday, you were condescending and very disrespectful to the community. You will be held to atonement by your own higher power, but your higher power is us. And I'm going to remind you, and just read what you handed out so nicely today. Dearborn Public Schools believes that media materials containing graphic or gratuitous violence, sexual contact, explicatives, or hate speech without literally or educational merit, educational merit, should not be included in our school media center. And I'm going to read you that act that you so graciously put in there. Harmful to minors means sexually exploited material that meets all of the following criteria. Consider as a whole, it appeals to the prudest interests of minors as determined by contemporary local community standards. This community. It is patently offensive and suitable, local standards of adults as to what is suitable for minors, worthy adults. Local community means that the county in which the material is disseminated, this county. Prude's interest means lustful interest in sexual stimulation or gratification in determining whether sexually excluded matters appears to be prudent interest, and the matter shall be judged with a reference to the average age of seventeen-year-old minors. It appears from the character of the matter that is designated to appeal to the prudest interest of particular group persons, including but not limited to homosexuals and sadamists. And then matters shall be judged in reference average age of minors within the particular group from which it appears to be designated. This is a legislative law, and you are not abiding by it. And may God have mercy on your soul.
Next speaker is Mr. Najee Al Madhaji and Fahd Al Maori, would like to address the board on school curriculum, as well as age-appropriate materials, and they're in Dearborn.
Assalamu alaikum. Thank you all. So I want to first start out by saying one thing. Any of the teachers that are here, our beef is not with you. Our beef is with you. So let me get that out of the way. Now, last month, I came to the board meeting for the first time in my life, and we read some of the material that was in these so-called books, the great sex app debate. There's actual reviews about Grindr, saying how good it is. I have used Grindr. The advantages are, you can get what you want quickly. This is from the book. I've met a variety of interesting people through sex apps. They're predominantly used for sex, though. They're sold to us as social networking apps, but we all know what they're really for. I don't have a problem with that aspect of it. If people want casual sex, then something like Grindr is a must. And we read that to you last month, and you looked at us like we were some kind of crazy people speaking to you, like, almost like we had nothing to, like, we had nothing to say. Now, does anybody need a college education or a PhD to know that this book is not appropriate for kids? Why in God's name do we need to have some complicated process? This is strictly just common sense, guys. How did we get to this point? So when I mentioned this last week, I thought, what's going to happen is, you guys would be like, okay, you know what, you parents, you have, you have a point. We'll work on making our processes more robust. These books absolutely do not belong in the library. But instead, what happened was the exact opposite. We were viciously attacked, social media and beyond social media, even people like me, people trying to get me fired from work, and yet, at the same time, they are attacking us while at the same time being the victim. And all along, all you guys are silent. What exactly are you doing? So let me say this. Let me say this. I have faith in the great people of Dearborn, okay? The vast majority of people in Dearborn agree with us. We are a compassionate people. We are a tolerant people. We are a faithful people. And at the same time, we are a courageous people, and we're not going to give up until this issue is finally resolved. And unfortunately, it's not going to get resolved until you guys are removed from the board.
Next speaker is Mr. Hussain Al Moudawal of Dearborn, would like to address the board on protecting our kids from materials not age-appropriate. Next speaker is Mr. Jason Skidmore, would like to address the board on supporting the freedom to read.
So I had a very different speech planned for Monday night, but sitting in that angry crowd, I kept coming back to this thought of the American cycle. The original revolutionaries fought to secure our independence as a people. They wrote the Constitution to ensure the pursuit of liberty and freedom for their descendants, who then derided the Dagoes, Whops, and Polacks that came 100 years later in search of the same. And they struggled through squalor, formed the unions that would earn them a fair living, allowing them to seek prosperity outside the limits. And from the comfort of the suburbs, their children and grandchildren looked to Mexico, Puerto Rico, looked to the Middle East, and said, no, we don't want you. Go back. And still, you came, you persevered, you built wonderful prosperous community. So now, you find that which you disapprove of, that which you hate, and you choose to subvert that end of community. Now, you can claim this isn't about hate and for a segment of you. Maybe it is purely about the graphic nature of these books, and if it is, I can respect that. But look at the hateful signs that were on display the other night. Consider some of the language that we're seeing picked up from the Christian right who spent years trying to shove the gay back in the closet. Indoctrination, grooming, acceptance of pedophilia. That should be all you need to see this for what it is. It's one woman's crusade to stir up the ultra-conservative element around one trumped-up issue. Come on. These kids weren't reading these books. And use it in a manipulative effort to replace a balanced school board with one tailored to their narrow set of views, that all the way to the top until there are no voices left in this country but theirs. I don't know that she expected such support from the Muslim community, but here they are, apparently fervent in their fear of all LGBTQ, because, like I said, it's their turn to embrace the American way. So the school board has done its duty. You've listened to the community's concerns, done your investigation, presented a reasonable program that allows each parent to make these decisions for their kids. And I, for one, won't give up my rights as a father to anyone whose parenting skills are so fragile their teenagers can be undone by ink on a page. It's time for you to draw your line and stand by it. Much of the community will stand with you despite all of this. If you cave and remove these books, they may believe they've won, but it doesn't make them right. History will judge them on that, and it will judge you. This nation does not look back fondly on such efforts to subdue its freedom.
I ask that you please be respectful of every speaker. We have been respectful. There has been respect shown up until now. Please continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Please. Next, until your turn, when you have the opportunity to speak, you can convey your message. Next speaker is Ms. Louis Jowelli. Sorry, you did not write your name. She would like to speak to the board on supporting the civil rights of all students and giving my time to Nancy DeZasick.
No, we can't do that.
Next, Nancy? Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Mary K. Quibb, would like to speak to the board on supporting public education.
Sorry, I didn't see my name. My name is Mary K. Kubitschek. I have lived in Dearborn for 55 years. I have taught hundreds and hundreds of Dearborn Public School students over the last 14 years. I have watched my three children graduate from Dearborn Public Schools in recent years, and I pay attention to the school board meetings and to school board elections. And I'm saying all this to give you some idea of the depth of my investment in the effectiveness and success of our schools in Dearborn. These are my children, my schools, this is my community. And my message here today is not for the board, but for my community. I stand here today to represent the teachers, the administrators, the support staff in our schools every single day, the people who are being called names, the same people we have met at open houses and conferences, the same people who are doing their very best to support your children and teach our children, the same people who have huddled in the corners of classrooms with our children, teaching them what to do if a school shooter enters the building, the same people who would place themselves between a school shooter and our children. And these are the people we are attacking. The school board and Dr. Malenko worked around the clock during COVID to protect our children when we knew absolutely nothing about it. And these are the people we are attacking. Mayor Hamood was called names last week for pointing out what we all know because it was made very clear at the board meeting Monday night that political groups from outside Dearborn are manipulating our community to whip up hate against teachers and administrators and support staff. And especially against our LGBTQ students and staff members. The very same political groups, groups by the way, who have a history of embracing anti-Muslim ideologies. The very same groups who are doing this in hundreds of school districts in dozens of states all in the last year. And we know this isn't about the books because the district has pulled the books in question to review. And they're reviewing every single book in every single school library. And they're allowing parents to opt out of any books. And they've created a repeal process. So let's stop pretending this is about protecting children from books. We all know this is about erasing our LGBTQ students and staff. It was literally written on signs people brought to the meeting on Monday. As a community, we need to come together and ensure that those who are different from us are embraced and supported. We need to teach our children that we do not fear people who are different from us, but that we welcome them into our community. We need to ensure our community, our schools, and our classrooms are safe, welcoming environments for every student and every staff member, regardless of their identity, religion, or nation of origin. That's who we should be as a community.
Next speaker is Mr. Next speaker is Mr. Jonathan Cade. Would like to address the board on protecting all Dearborn students and faculty, including LGBTQ plus people.
Please do not speak if you do not have the floor. Be respectful and calm. Thank you.
Jonathan Cade. Not here. Next speaker of Dearborn, Mr. Amru Hizam. Would like to address the board on parents' rights in the educational system.
I am a father of Dearborn Public School, of a Dearborn Public School student and a product of Dearborn Public Schools. The majority of parents are not here to attack anyone. We are not here to attack the board. We are not here to attack the LGBT community. And we are not here especially to attack our teachers. We cannot allow extremes on both sides to hijack the narrative. We are here to exercise our parental rights and to hold the board accountable to the highest degree. To the board, to the board, we entrust you with our children's safety along with their education. The blatantly inappropriate content in question has no place in our public schools. We have, we have chosen you as our board to protect our children from age inappropriate content. And all the parents here, yes, there is also a threat to our children from the internet and social media apps such as TikTok, where far worse content exists. However, internet use at home does not absolve the board from being held accountable by parents. We are justified in voicing our concern about normalizing sexually inappropriate content in public schools. To the LGBT community, the majority of parents are not here to attack your right to exist in a free society. But parents also have rights to protect their children. Criticism of age inappropriate content is not criticism of the LGBT community. However, advocating for such materials to be placed in schools is a violation of parents' rights. Finally, you as the board have a duty to repair the trust that has been ruptured between parents and the public school system. And for the person that said that, in the back, I'll repeat what he said. American values and the American way is not child pornography.
Next speaker is Ms. Jane Mazza of DFT 681. Would like to address the board on public schools teachers.
Hello, good evening, Board President and Dr. Malenko and Board Trustees. I'm Jane Mazza, President of DFT 681. DFT 681 has always supported quality public education, supporting a welcoming environment for all of our students and staff. Unfortunately, a political agenda discredit our hardworking staff and our public school system is what is occurring this evening. This political group has used fear and misinformation to intentionally divide our community and cast negative allegations on the integrity of our staff. I find it puzzling that the community media sources have highlighted and spread the misinformation from this group. The DFT 681 has given back to the community in many ways. Over the past 10 years, we've given out to children in this community over 10,000 books at homecoming and other events. In August of 2021, the DFT was awarded a $90,000 grant to promote back-to-school events. Every Dearborn school benefited from this grant. No community press was given to these events. DFT will continue to bring positive events to all of our children. Everyone can agree that having resources and books in our schools that speak to the diversity of identities and experiences of our students is critical for equality and supportive education. Our community, like many others across the country, is being inter, intentionally, sorry, divided by political players who agenda revolves around anti-public school, anti-public school teachers, not what is best for students. Love and concern that every parent has for their children is being exploited with these false narratives to divide our community for public reasons. I've been a teacher in this community for over 30 years. My children attended and graduated from Dearborn Schools. My grandchildren presently attend Dearborn Public Schools. Please think about the teachers who teach your children. Many of them have their own children attending Dearborn Public Schools. You know them because they attend your churches or mosques and live in this community. They are working hard every day to make sure your child is cared for and educated in the best environment that is welcoming to all, no matter their background, racial, or religious identity. We need to work together, Dearborn. We have a strong parent component. We've always offered classes and support for our parents. Parents should absolutely have an active role in their child's reading and education. But no parent should be able to tell another parent what their child is allowed or not to read. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Mike Hashem of Dearborn. Would like to wish, would like to speak to the board on education.
Good evening, board members. First of all, I'd like to tell the teachers that are in the room today, and some of whom I went through their classrooms actually. Thank you for teaching us, but our beef today, like others have said, it's not about you guys. Good evening, board members. I'd like to ask this body of school board members, whether you believe you are using your positions and platforms for future political advantages or whether you choose this position of influence to defend, advocate, and fight for the needs and concerns of the families and individuals who elected you. Question, are you still standing firm in the statements you made when you were running for and gathering votes for your current positions? I take that as a no. As school board members, it is your duty to do what is right for your community. But unfortunately, that has not been the case. The community attended last board meeting with true concern about their children's education and exposures to explicit material. But unfortunately, this body did not take us seriously. It was only when the community came together and protested to hold the board accountable that this board and administration decided to take action. Although, hold on, hold on. Although there has been a change by your administration. This is, this is a only minor step to a much larger and more complex issue. There is more work to be done. This work can only take place by joining with your community members to discuss the issues, listen to our concerns, engage in open communications, and come together to enforce long-term proactive measures to keep our community and youth safe from material that is in the least way instructive, educational, or beneficial to our youth. This is not a battle between the school board and the community. This is instead, has to be a collective effort to ensure our children are receiving the educational resources that will further their futures and not further confuse them. Over the past few weeks, I have had multiple parents, religious figures, and organizations contact me and others who worked on this issue of their support for this cause we are pursuing today. We're all on the same mission, and that mission is to enrich the minds of our developing children with material that will further their education and future paths. Schools are no place to teach children about the complexity of sexuality, gender identification, or sexually explicit material. Instead, instead.
Thank you very much for your comments. Everyone is given three minutes. That's the fair way to do it. In the, in the past, we have had people that just go on and on beyond their three minutes. We are being fair to everyone. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ms. Rula Mackey No City. Would like to speak to the board on education.
Thank you. Good evening and Assalamualaikum. I stand here today as a concerned citizen and a concerned parent. I just want everybody to know that my loyalty does not lie to the right or to the left. It lies just to my community and my child and my future children. The past week, we, the movement that is obviously against sexually explicit pornographic material in the libraries, we've been called so many names. Trumpers, MAGA's, extremists, Christian white nationalists. Somebody put a picture of us, apparently, terror, whatever. And I just want to, and I just want to say something that if we were anti-LGBT, we would be going after these social clubs in schools. I, from my understanding, there are gay, straight alliance clubs in the high schools. And if this was an anti-LGBT movement, we would be going after them before we'd go after the books. And I just have a question for people who are Second Amendment supporters. Would you guys be okay with guns and ammo magazine subscriptions in our library? Because it's not age appropriate. And that's what we're trying to make you guys understand. We're trying to make you understand appropriateness is age appropriateness. These books are obviously inappropriate. They're sexually explicit. They're pornographic. They're disgusting. I'm disgusted just looking at them, let alone read them. The media itself, you know, blurred out the images from these books. So just, you know, just ponder on that for a moment. Thank you for hearing me out.
Next speaker is Mr. Hassan Ali of Dearborn. Would like to address the board on education.
Good evening. My name is Hassan Ali. I'd like to speak about education. There is no doubt that the argument for public education is a good one. In our diverse society of competing faith and value systems, the promise of education for all remains the great equalizer among individuals and a safeguard of our republic. That's why we tolerate a government monopoly on education. Because education for all is necessary for a healthy society on the condition that it serves the common good. On that basis, we place our trust in public schools, that they serve the common good. The argument for public education fails when that condition is no longer met. When parents, the primary stakeholders in public education, fear that public schools are being weaponized in order to push a pernicious political agenda, a set of beliefs and dogmas that seek to indoctrinate students and turn them against their faith or against the values of their families. That is when parents lose trust in public education. Across the country and here in Dearborn, we are witnessing that loss of trust. We've seen political activism encroach upon the public school system, not just in the form of obscene books that masquerade as representation, but in curriculums, in school policies, in political flags and symbols that hang in classrooms, and in activists who abuse their trust to teach objectively and impartially and instead seek to make activists out of their students. Those activists not only betray the trust of their profession, they betray their colleagues, the vast majority of whom are dedicated teachers who serve their students in earnest despite being underpaid and overworked. On behalf of parents, I want to honor our teachers and express our esteem and gratitude for everything they do. As, as the adults in the room, we have a collective responsibility to our children, to posterity, to ensure the education they receive is worthy of their childhood and their inquisitive minds. For that reason, we've submitted a resolution to the board containing sensible and practical measures to affirm the rights of parents to direct the education of their children, to increase transparency in school curriculum instructional materials.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Muhammad Muslouh of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on education. Next speaker is Mr. Mustafa Al Karagulli of Melvindale. Would like to speak to the board on children's rights. It's not about LGBTQ. It's about kids' exposure to sexual content. So is he here to address us? Next speaker is Mr. Jackson Wagner of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on the proposed book ban.
My name is Jackson Wagner. I was born in Dearborn. I've lived here my entire life and I'm a gay man. It saddens me to see our community torn asunder, to see friends and neighbors turn on one another. Diversity has always been Dearborn's strength. Let's never forget that. We have schools to train students to be engaged citizens of a democracy and to coexist with people different from them. How can we teach the next generation of citizens to embrace democratic values like freedom of the press, freedom of speech, and freedom of religion if we betray these principles and deny them these liberties in school? We all.
Please allow the speaker to speak. Thank you. Continue.
We all want children to be safe and we all want them to be well-informed. These goals seem like they are in conflict today, but they don't have to be. We know that sexuality is more or less the same over the course of someone's life, even if how they express it goes through changes. I was born gay. No matter how homophobic my environment was, no matter how much I denied it, nothing could change that. It just made me suffer. For many people like me, that pain drove them to suicide. Banning LGBT books isn't going to stop anyone from being gay. It will just make them miserable and alienate them. And the consequences might be fatal. I want everyone here to imagine a time when they felt like everyone around you hated you for who you are. I'm not Muslim and most of you aren't gay. But all of us know what it is like to be mistreated by people who know little about you. Maybe you can hide who you are, but that hurts in a different way. The far right in this country despises us all. The far right in this country despises us all. What I'm asking for is that everyone have compassion and consider the harm you do to the most vulnerable among us when you stigmatize their very existence. It is the, it is the duty of every community to build a nurturing environment. Even though I had open-minded and supportive parents who instilled in me the value of books and diverse cultures, without a supportive environment, I still suffered. We owe today's students a better community. Let's build that community environment by choosing to discuss difficult topics rather than shying away from them. Let's stand together in solidarity and hospitality. Dearborn should be a city where everyone knows that they are safe and loved and supported.
Next speaker is Mr. Albert.
Please stay calm. Go ahead.
Yep. Mr. Albert Abbas, No City. Would like to speak to the board on books. Go ahead, Albert.
Everyone be respectful and calm and allow speakers to speak.
Mr. Abbas, please proceed to speak.
Yes, please continue. Everyone be quiet so we can hear the speaker. Be calm and respectful. Thank you. Please go ahead, Mr. Abbas.
Dear respected board members, we have entrusted you to protect our children physically, emotionally, and morally from the evils that threaten us. This is another attempt to confuse our children and make a mockery of Dearborn while destroying the family structure. These, there are other districts that have fallen prey to this filthy material, breaking the barriers that protect the most vulnerable. The issue here is not a religious one, nor is it an attack against the LGBTQ community. It is an issue of age appropriateness. It is an issue of sexually explicit, obscene, and lewd content. Many of us here, many of us here don't care what your sexual preference is, nor do we want to argue about gender identities or if men can get pregnant. What concerns us is that your personal beliefs do not poison the beliefs, our beliefs, our religious duties, or the biological facts. When the schools decided to take God out of the classroom, it was to protect children from being indoctrinated. The same applies here. When you try to please everyone, that simply means you stand for nothing. Coming up with an opt-out-of-books program is not a solution. Taking out the garbage is. When our children are under your watch, it is your duty to protect them from erotica or overly provocative words or graphic porn. We are not talking about public libraries, nor do we agree with censorship. This is not a platform to segregate us based on political affiliation, nor is it a platform to advance political careers, be it school board, city council, or mayoral. We do not care about the ones that try to vilify us in the papers and media, in the media outlets, and history will remember us as, remember us in a positive way. We will not tolerate many of you that make this about political affiliations to get caught up in your backyard brawls, pitting us against each other while you quietly ignore the facts and endanger our children. My affiliation, my affiliation and responsibility is to protect my children and all children from falling prey to the traps of the creeps and pedophiles in this world. This is as black and white as it gets. This determines who will turn their backs on children. Our voices will be heard, and this will continue to escalate until our concerns do not fall on deaf ears. We will remember who abandoned us and who stood with truth and dignity. Every one of you will be held liable in the court of...
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Mr. Brian Stone.
Everyone, everyone, please sit down and let the next person speak. We appreciate you being respectful and calm and allowing everyone their opportunity.
Mr. Stone of Dearborn would like to address the board on book ban policies, safety of LGBTQ students, staff, and parents.
This is not a debate about books. It's a debate about culture. And let's just admit that. Because...
Be respectful and allow someone...
People who want to ban books about gay people and come up and use words like pedophile to describe gay people, who use words like sexual perversion to describe gay people, you're not trying to ban a book. You're trying to ban gay people. That's what this is about. And it's obvious because the signs are there. And you know what? It's not about pornography either. Because you printed out eight-foot-tall signs of what you called was pornography, and then you showed it to dozens of children at your own rallies. If it's pornography, then the guy holding the sign was showing it to all your kids. Come on, man. Let's talk about what this really is. You hate gay people, and it's obvious because look at how you behave when one gay person speaks. Look at how you act, and your children are watching.
Mr. Stone, Mr. Stone, you need, you need to... You need to address the board.
I'm being shouted down.
You need to address the board and not the audience.
Yes, well, I'd like to also say this. Characters in books deserve to be defended. Every kind of character, gay characters, black characters, every diverse kind of character that can exist in a book belongs in our libraries. And you know what? They belong for one very simple reason, because literature reflects reality.
Address the board, please.
Literature reflects reality. And let me tell you this, too. There are people who are adulterers in the real world. There are people who cheat their business partners. There's people who do all kinds of things in books. They're villains. They shoot people. They hurt people. They do dastardly things. And we don't try to ban them from every book. And you know why we don't ban every book that has a villain? Because there's villains in real life. There's people who go out and bully others, who try to shout them down, who pull up signs and shame them and make them feel less than. Yes, villains exist in this world. And if the most wretched villain belongs on the page of a book, then so too does a young gay child or a gay character who's just trying to survive.